On, get on now. All right. Let's call this meeting to order. It's a little, it's about almost a minute after six. All rise for the pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you all for coming this evening. I had a couple of things I wanted to mention. First, sort of a funny story for some of you administrators out in the audience. I had received, or somebody had sent me, a chain of emails that had been going around from some folks within the community, and they were commenting on the board's budget hearings. And they, and somebody had mentioned in one of the emails that they were frustrated because every time they went to one of the budget meetings, it looked as though the board had stacked the room with administrators and staff. Little do they know that most of you are, Patrick has to twist your arm to come. And I, so again, I thank you, administration, for showing up to these meetings. So regarding the budget, there were a couple of things I wanted to mention. There will be a second question on the ballot when we vote in June. For those folks who are watching this on TV, that question is whether or not we are going to continue the two-part validation process. And what that means is currently every district within the state is forced by the state to follow a two-part validation process. The first part with the budget, where we have the town hall style meeting, and folks show up and vote by show of hands for the budget. The second meeting is a, the traditional go to the ballot box a week later and cast your vote up or down. The question on the ballot, the second question, is whether or not we will continue with that second piece of it. So again, for those folks who weren't aware of what we had been required to do or what we could do in the future, we could just have it be that single town hall style meeting, if you vote that down. But some folks may be in favor of continuing the two-part validation. So I wanted to bring that up. The other thing I wanted to mention in light of the grades that we had received from the governor's office, or from the Board of Edu-, excuse me, the Department of Education. In general, you know, I'd like to commend our administration. I think our schools are doing a great job, and, you know, I think they should be commended for the work that we do. I feel that, you know, we've seen great strides in all of our schools, from the elementary level to the middle school, to the high school level. And really, kudos across the board to all of the administration. But it does raise the question, how do we know when we're doing a good job? How do we know when our schools are doing a good job? And particularly, how do we know when our teachers are doing a good job? With the education of our children, it starts with the parents. But beyond that, in our schools, it's the teacher which has the most contact with the students. And I started thinking about this question about how do we know when we're doing a good job? And the thing that prompted it was, I have a sister-in-law who teaches in the New Jersey School Department. She teaches in Camden, New Jersey. She's been in the same district for 25 years. And I saw her about a week ago at a christening, family christening. And I asked her that question. I said, "You've been doing this for 25 years. You've seen a lot of principals come and go. How do you know yourself that you're still doing a good job?" And she was taken aback by the question. I don't, I don't think she was offended, but... And she said, "I just kind of, when the year starts, I kind of feel it in my heart." And I thought, okay, that's a good answer, but I don't think that's a great answer. I think any of us in the profession that we do, sure, we can kind of take our own temperature, but do we have systems within the workplace, within our district, that allows us to let staff reflect and get an honest evaluation on how they're doing? And if they feel that they're not living up to what they could be, are the resources there to give them that assistance? And I just want to make sure that, you know, as we're looking at this budget and we're going into next year, that we make sure that we've got systems in place to give teachers the resources that they need to do the job correctly, and that we've got systems in place for accountability. So that it's not just, you're not just looking within yourself to say, "Yeah, I think I'm still doing a good job 25 years down the road," but there are some very clear processes in place that allow you to evaluate yourself. So anyway, just wanted to kind of relate that story. With that said, I think I've addressed all the comments that I had. All right. Did you say finally? No, it's all right, it's okay. You need to, you guys need to evaluate me every now and then and say, "Okay, that's enough."
David had been working so hard, I hadn't even been able to say good evening.
We'll move on to item 4.0, approve and amend minutes. We're just going to look at the minutes from April 29th. I had not seen the minutes from April 6th. Might have gotten them through email, but what we got tonight was the first I've seen of them. So on the ones from the 29th, is there a motion?
So.
To approve?
To approve.
Seconded?
Okay, seconded by Alan. Are there any changes, additions? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes as written, raise your hand. All those opposed? Okay. Pass. All right, we will table the minutes of May 6th until the next meeting. Please take some time between now and then to look those over. Item 5.0, adjustments to the agenda. Patrick, do you have anything?
I just have two. One, an agenda adjustment is nomination of Applied Academics Instructor at VRCTC. And the other one is first reading of five policies that I think he received via email.
Okay, so that nomination, we'll make that 12.2. And we have five policies. Okay. We'll move on to item 6.0, public comment. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Okay. We will move on to item 7.0, student reports. We have one student report this evening. Turn that over to you.
So I'd like to welcome the people that are here from Pittsburgh and Gary Babcock.
All right, well, we've written a book about the Popem Colony.
Could you please stand up to them?
We've written a book about the Popem Colony, and the students are going to tell you the process we made through, how they came up with their ideas. They have some examples of our works in progress, and you can ask questions of them at the end.
And would you mind introducing yourself?
Sure, Amber Snell, ADHD grade.
Thank you, Amber.
I'm Casey Castle. We were learning about the colonies like Game Charles and Clemente over angry, that no textbook or resource had Popem in it. We wanted people to know about Popem, so we decided to write a book about it. We had a former student who published a novel book, come in and tell us about the process. Then we worked in groups to research and take notes about different aspects of the colony. These are our note cards that we, like, we put, we had groups, and we had note cards to write down our notes. And these are some of our notes that we wrote down. These are some of the stuff we used, either the resources that we use, some that we, like, use at all of them. But we had some people reading keynotes that about stuff that we dot worked on.
I'm Amy Newman. The first thing we did was look at some examples of characters. Then we took some notes on the characters in groups of three or four. After that, we looked at some personality traits and filled out a few questions. The last part of the drafting was taking some different topics, like their resources, the Virginia, Fort St., George, et cetera, and writing about them. And here are some examples of the characters, and it asks a few questions that we filled out.
I'm Kelly Pierce, and first we saw a couple of dogs and tagged up our drafts. Then we go through ours in class and do some editing every day. After that, we revised and put some finality, and had some people that just helped our librarian go over it and edit. Finally, we got a few illustrations. And here are examples of the editing we did. For the pictures, we put some of them in chapters at the beginning of the chapter. We put the pictures that we thought were good with the chapter. If you forgot, if they were on the handle on order, you could look at the pictures there. Right before we published it, we went over it as a class. Our librarian even read it and gave us some suggestions. These are our pictures that everyone did. Our book is called "The Ethical Nature of the Popem Colony." Chapter one, we met your people. It started as a lecture filled with etheriness and excitement. They didn't realize it was going to turn out to be their worst enemy. Captain James Davis couldn't wait to get on the boarder ship. He could already hear a whistling of the wind in the noon while he takes his saucy seat air on his lip. The ship was almost ready to set sail, and he was so excited, he couldn't wait to leave his mother's land.
I hope you have any questions for us. I'm sure they'd be willing to answer them.
So are there any questions from the board, for the fifth graders from Pittsburgh? Go ahead, Steve.
Although I haven't seen the information yet, what, who do you think was the most interesting character that you uncovered in your research?
I'd probably have to say Raleigh Gilbert.
What was the name?
Raleigh Gilbert.
Raleigh Yoker? Gilbert. Gilbert.
Because he's basically the main character of the book, and he talks about how he learns about stories and stuff, about like old tales and stuff, about summer stuff, and talks about his life.
Are there any other questions from the board? I have one. During this process, well, I really have two questions. And one, you may have answered, and I might have been looking at some of the information. My first question is, how long did this total process take you? I know we read about it in a newsletter last month, or maybe a month ago. So what was the length of the process? And my second question is, what was the hardest part of the process? From research to finish book, what was the hardest part?
Well, the first question, I'd say it's the process, how long, because it was like probably four or two months. And I'm going to let someone else do that, it's the same question.
I would have to say it's the second question, the research, because there wasn't a lot of information about Popem.
Okay. Did anybody think editing was the hardest part? No, all right, that's great. Okay, are there any other questions for the group?
Mr. Chairman, not a question as much as the pride that I feel in what you've done, and what you've accomplished. I had the privilege back in 2007 with a bunch of local citizens to put together a celebration of the 400th anniversary of the Popem Colony. And it took us months, and all we ever heard about, every time we worked and we'd meet, and all we ever heard about from the press and everybody else was "Jamestown, Jamestown, Jamestown." And we kept saying, "Popem was special too." And now you've published a book, and a whole new generation has taken up the charge, and your pride in your community is very, very special. And I just want to congratulate you kids, and your teacher, and your principal for putting together this wonderful work and displaying the pride that you have in your town and in the colony.
Tim, can I ask something?
Sure, go ahead, Rob. Just if you could take the microphone, speak into the microphone.
I tried to give it to Alan, and it just keeps coming back. I'm just wondering how many copies have been published and where they might be ending up eventually?
Our PTA purchased a copy for all the kids in the class, and we have a copy for our school library, which they all signed. This will be worth something someday. And we're donating it to the Topman Library in town and probably the Historical Society. And we have a link on our webpage, school webpage. And I'll probably see if I can forward that along to other people too, if they want to purchase it.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
I keep advising them to send one to the Library of Congress as well. They'll catalog it, and it'll be down in Washington.
One of the things that was passed around was from the Middlesex, I can't remember, the Peabody down in Salem, Massachusetts. And, you know, I think this would be a tremendous place for this kind of information to be, you know, shared with. Because people come there from all over, you know, and looking for information. This is a really good resource for them. Big, big guys, big, big.
Dr. Jeffrey Brain, and he works there. He's the one who had most of the information, because like he said, it wasn't anywhere. So we used his work in our research. So I think it's good to send him a copy, saying, "This is how we use your work."
Well, and the perspective is different too. You know, the scholarly, you know, adults.
Well, it was hard for us writing about historical fiction. They sometimes wanted to do more fiction and fantasy, like there was a sea monster. And we had to talk about, "Well, let's kind of stick in history." So that was a lesson too.
All right, well, thank you so much. Thanks for coming up. Thank you guys for coming in. Okay, we'll give them a moment to collect their stuff, their notes. And then we will move on to staff reports. We'll begin with the main autism leaders team. And that's going to be presented by Sharon Brown. Patrick, did you have anything you needed to say? All right, Sharon, come on up.
I don't know where they are. I'm not a team. There were 10 folks on our team, and the main autism leadership team was developed in response to requests from the state to submit applications to have teams of about 10 people from school districts to participate in a three-year training that began this year with six full training days, as well as some workshop days that we've done just among the team with their mentor and coach here in the district. So I'm going to describe this. I actually was on the original team, but I backed off because we had so much interest in folks in special ed wanting to participate, that I thought it was a lot more important that they actually handled the information and developed the process. So I'm going to turn it over to them to really kind of describe that process. And all of them aren't going to speak, but folks who are on the team, that they want to stand up, please. One, two, three. It's hard to compete with fifth graders. But I'm really, really proud of these folks. They have done a great job. They're very invested. Pat Armstrong, our social work worker and our special ed coordinator at the high school, has really taken a leadership role in this. And I really appreciate the reference, because frankly, she's been much more thorough than I would have been able to be. So this is a great career we've had.
Thank you, Sharon. And as you folks come up, we may know you, but the folks who are watching this on TV may not. So if you could just please introduce yourself and say what part of the team you're affiliated with or which school you're affiliated, that would be helpful. Thank you.
So Sharon pretty much said everything I was going to say. I'm Pat Armstrong. I'm the school social worker here at Morris, I'm a special ed coordinator as well, and coordinate the MALE team. So MALE, the main autism leaders team, as Sharon said, is an initiative of the Department of Education. In 2009, the Centers for Disease Control said that the prevalence rate of folks with autism spectrum disorders was 1 in 110. And last year, they put out the statistic that it is now 1 in 88. So we have a lot of students who are on the spectrum and need some very special care. And so this year, when we went out for these six trainings in Orinow, we spent a lot of time with Kathy Pratt, who's an expert in the field. And she talked about evidence-based practices for educating students on the spectrum. And we were also introduced to our mentor, who is Dr. Ruth Ellis. She teaches in the Department of Education at the University of Maine in Orinow. And she comes down to mentor us, and she serves as an ongoing guide for us. So for over, for the next three years, we will be continuing to educate ourselves. We'll be looking at the data in our district. We'll be trying to figure out what our needs are, what our resources are, and continue to amend our goals as we move forward. So this year, we have identified three goals, and we have a few people that are going to speak to two of those goals. And so I'll ask Lisa.
My name is Lisa Gastege, and I'm a special ed teacher at the Diagnostic School. I'm also the parent of an adult on the autism spectrum. So I wanted to tell you a little bit about the autism spectrum. This month, May 2013, the Diagnostic and Statistical Manual, it will be revising its definition of the autism spectrum disorder. And one is, one thing that some of the autism spectrum disorder has is persistent deficits in communication and interactions in all the areas of life, restricted and repetitive patterns of behavior, or unusual reactions to sensory input. And this is very abbreviated from DSM-V, which is really long. And these symptoms must be present in early childhood. Educational considerations that we face at all levels in our school are that individuals on the autism spectrum present very unique challenges. There's no recipe, there's no standard approach, and each individual has unique strengths. The goal that I'm working with is Jackie Anderson, Amy King, Lauren Knapp, Tammy Baxter, and myself. And we're developing our team's knowledge and understanding of the autism spectrum disorder. The next thing we're going to do is assess the professional development needs of our district. And I was at, I would happen to be at the May 6th meeting, and I know there was some discussion about professional development in our district, and how we might share professional development within the district. And that's one of the things that this team is going to be doing is perfect, working on our own knowledge and then sharing it.
I, uh... I hate both. I'm also with assistant principal at a middle school in Morris High School. I am on the data team. Currently, the goal is to gather district data on students with ASD. And this would include child count data, present level of student performance, and need within our district. The goal has amended itself a couple times, because one issue we ran into is we had the three trainings, and each time we had the training, we'd get excited and jumpstart the process, and then we had the next training. And we realized, well, maybe we need to modify what type of data we're looking for and figure out what our needs are that way. And we went to another training, and it kind of modified again. So the first step is first to gather, what is the, what does the RSU look like right now with students with ASD? Like, how many do we have, how many are in school, and how are they performing? What are their grades, what are the behavioral referrals? To get a baseline for where we are at in the RSU, and then, and then take steps forward. One of which would be to type team with, the first one is they're going to look at professional development needs, and, you know, some of the issues might be, you know, teachers, what is your general understanding? How much do you know about students with ASD? How comfortable are you dealing with some of the behaviors that might manifest themselves? And so that can be a type teaming with our ability to collect the data in the first place. But it's not a boring process. It's like flying a plane that you're building at the same time. So that's pretty much it. Oh, I see, there's Nancy Riddick, Erin Chubbuck, and Mark Bruce are the ones on the data team.
And don't forget Lori introducing you, if she's not, or Nan.
Oh, all right, thank you. Which, is she on? Oh, I'm sorry. All right, so Lori Nan is on the first group as well. So, how about this bag? I'm going to break it. Is that a fifth grader here?
Technician, please.
Do you have any questions? Okay, are there any questions from the board? David?
Yes. Perhaps one of the reasons for the apparent increased incidence is the dramatic expansion of the definition of the autistic syndrome disorder. of the definition of the autistic syndrome disorder, and now appears to include diagnoses that in the past would not have been fallen within that purview. Are you now considering diagnoses like attention deficit disorder or something like Tret syndrome as being within this spectrum disorder requiring IEPs and full-time management in that regard?
So the DSM-5 that Lisa mentioned is not yet what was used in the CDC number of 1 in 88. So that was still based on data from the previous definition of autism spectrum disorder. We are not doing the diagnosing within our district, so we're, you know, we're working off students that come into the district with a doctor's diagnosis of autism spectrum disorder, which the DSM-5 is going to expand to include pervasive development disorder, Asperger's disorder, and autism disorder. Kathy Pratt, who was the expert that did part of our trainings, spoke to this a little bit and clarified in my mind sort of why the clumping together is happening. And essentially, she said that in looking at all the people that are out there diagnosing autism, there's just a huge number of people that diagnose students with autism, you know, and call it pervasive developmental disorder, which call it Asperger's or call it autism. So it's not that the number of students has actually changed in terms of the diagnosis that people with pervasive developmental disorder need the same sort of education services and effective practices as folks that have already been diagnosed in the spectrum. So for me, that helped me to clarify why it's a spectrum, and that pervasive developmental disorder might be on the very lower end of the spectrum, whereas Asperger's might fall somewhere, anywhere along the spectrum, and then most of the era towards the upper end of the spectrum. That answers the question?
Yes, I think so.
Can I just add just a little bit to that? Dave, you asked the question about students with perhaps ADHD or EHD or Tret syndrome. We certainly might have those students included in a population of special education students, but typically, they would be identified other than autism. Most typically, they would probably come under other health impairment categories.
Thank you.
There any other questions from the board? I've got a couple. And again, this is all new to me. So this process began in 2009 at the state level, but this is the first year the team has had an opportunity to meet, and you'll be meeting for the next three years. What exactly are the outcomes for the district that you're expecting at the end of three years? Are there any systems that will be in place, or what sort of data do you hope to collect at the end of three years?
So the, I gave this statistic from the CDC of 2009. I don't know when the state started thinking about this, so that had nothing to do with that. Last summer was when the state requested applications for those three-year process. So the data that we're collecting that Ross spoke somewhat to is just district-wide, who are we serving, what are our needs, and how are our students functioning socially, academically, behaviorally, and how is that impacting our community? The initiative is a state-led initiative to increase awareness of and expertise statewide in working with this growing number of students that are on the spectrum. So that's why they have started to train some districts. Their hope is that we will then collaborate with other districts in our regions to help decrease from our community into surrounding communities. And I guess SAP-75, which is autism, is also being trained. And we've already started talking about collaborating and working together on figuring out how best to serve this population.
Okay, so once we've collected the data, the three-year period is done, what do you anticipate will be different in the district? What will we do differently once we have that data?
The data collection is ongoing, hopefully, to sort of figure out what we need to do and monitor how we're doing, what we think we need to do. Lisa spoke to goal number one, which is increasing our knowledge of research-based, evidence-based practices for teaching students with autism spectrum disorders. And so our goal would be to train all members of our teaching community and staff to work more effectively with our students for better outcomes, both in terms of their school performance, but social and behavioral, which impact their school performance in their life.
Okay, so at the end of that time, once we have the data, then the intent will be to educate our staff and also train them on how to deal, or better deal, with folks who fall within this spectrum. Has the state provided us any money to do this process?
Well, the trainings are all state.
State-funded or state-mandated?
No.
State-funded. Okay, great.
Tim, one thing I would add is it's a three-year process, right? So right now, we're speaking of what we're already, what we're doing is collecting the data. But hopefully, the goal is, hold until the end of the summer, we kind of have a baseline of where we are, right? And then at these trainings, we also receive best practice strategies and coaching models. And so the goal is actually to start looking at how do we take the information we have in our current population, as well as our teachers' comfort level with working with students with ASD, and then create a structure to support them? Like, are there teachers in the district who are great at certain strategies? And how do we best get them together to help each other become better and more effective? Or, you know, when a parent moves into the district, you know, we probably should have a go-to person. If they move into the district and they either travel with ASD, who is the district's go-to person? Do we have a point person? Like, things like that. So while we're simultaneously collecting data, while we're simultaneously worrying about best practices, so once we have the data, which should be done by the end of the summer, then we can start to look at how to, what do we do with the data, both teacher performance or teachers' ability or comfort level, as well as the numbers and how the students are currently performing, and then build a structure around that. One of the other areas is working with the outlying communities, not just the schools, but, you know, Mary meeting or other, or agencies. And how do we hook their parents up and create advocacy groups within themselves to help each other in support of others? And so all of those will come down the road once we have a better understanding of where we currently are.
So I'm going to put you on the spot a little bit. So as you're beginning this data collection right now, do you have any indication of how we're doing so far in terms of how we're treating and handling students and families that have students or children with ASD? I mean, as you've begun to dig into this?
Yeah, and I couldn't say that. I think in some areas, we're doing pretty well, and in other areas, we're not. And I think what we need to start really doing a hard science around is why are we doing well in certain areas and why are we not doing well with others? Anecdotally, there's a few cases that I know one of the reasons they're successful is they have, all of they had strong parent advocates, they had a lot of outside resources and supports, and then others who just kind of sift themselves through the system without a lot of support. But that's anecdotal. I mean, they're actual kids that I know, but it's still, it's not like we've been able to put them all together and figure that out. Does that make sense?
That does. That gives me a sense. Any other questions from the board for the team?
Tim, I have one.
Go ahead, Ron. If you could just speak into the microphone.
Oh, all right. I'll just leave it here.
No, you need to clean in. Thank you.
Excuse me. Right now, just a thumbnail sketch, I mean, it's a huge spectrum of children and abilities and, you know, difficulties and that sort of thing, but are we keeping most of our kids with ASD within our schools?
Is that the other question that you want to ask?
Well, that's what you say is going to, if I have more or not.
Okay. Right now, all of our students, we do keep within each of their schools, whichever of our community schools it is. We have a few that are in day treatment programs, but they're very few. And typically, those would be students who attend a local program.
Okay. Thank you. That's it.
And Tim, if I can just respond a little bit more to what Ross and Peg said in response to your question. The overarching goal of this whole initiative is to create leadership within the district so that we don't only have a point person, as Ross indicated, but we actually have clusters of folks that at any given time, we can pull together and say, here's the situation, here's the profile, and what, based on our best knowledge, is going to be, will be the best intervention for this child or this child. Part of the difficulty, as you've already heard, is that autism spectrum disorders are all over the place because it is broad. The spectrum is very broad. So the students function so differently in each of those three areas, academic, social, and behavioral, that it's very difficult to come up with a response. In fact, we shouldn't come up with a response. We really need to have a variety and an array. And so by creating, the state's hope is that by creating clusters of leaders in each district, that we will have internally the capability to be able to identify what response is the most appropriate, and that we can have our own resources. Frankly, sometimes, right now, folks kind of look to me to come to a meeting and say, okay, what do we do? And I'm like, wow, you tell me. What we do is go through a team process, but it could be better informed, and we want to make sure that it's evidence-based practices. So I really welcome this opportunity to create that kind of capacity in the system because right now, I think we do a great job with most of our kids, but as Ross said, there are some that I fear that we have not done our best with. And I'd like to be able to say we do the best by every one of them.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the board? All right, well, thank you so much for presenting, and thank you all for serving on this team, and look forward to hearing back from you either next year or year three to hear how this all went. So thanks again. Okay, we'll move on to item 8.2, Public Relations, and I'll turn that over to Patrick.
Before we do that, and Tim just thanked the team, but those team members that are here tonight, I know it's six days out this past year, more days the next two years, so thank you for your multi-year commitment to this important topic. And I know it's a lot of added work to your plate, very important work, and I appreciate it. So thank you. The next topic was on our list of items throughout the year that we would have a discussion about. So this one is more, I don't have a handout for you, it's more of, Tim and I were talking, more of a discussion item. And on your agenda, it talks about public relations. And for me, that really means, it can mean many different things, but for me, it's more how does a district do, how do we do our business to get the good news out, the positive news out of our school system in an effective, efficient manner? So I'm just going to go down through and list some ways that we do this, which is not going to be a surprise to you. Some of them may be, you may have questions about certain avenues that we use to get good news out. And then really, you know, board members ask questions, or if you have suggestions, or from a board perspective, representing RSU1, if you have ideas or suggestions, really that's why we're here, you know, to talk about this. I'll just go down through some. We all use newsletters in some fashion. Elementary schools, it's once a week, but then when you get to the middle school and then high school, it tends to be a little bit less than that. Social media, some of our schools and some of our organizations use Facebook to be able to, with all the privacy guards that need to be there, but use that to get the good news out into our, about our schools. You know about School Messenger? I think all of you do. That's our electronic system primarily used for snow days and emergencies, but it's also used, can be used for good news. Again, we're trying to balance, if we use it too much, some people may not pay attention to it, so we try to keep it, you know, used sparingly. Our websites, I think last year, we talked about this, that our websites are not perfect, but they're much improved from two years ago. We have started to develop some brochures, especially for our secondary level high school, just because we need to do a better job and reach a broader audience. So in other words, having a brochure that can describe the services and programs that we offer, and being able to put those out in the community in different places, take them to Realtors, Chamber of Commerce, other places. Public schools, I don't believe have done a very good job of marketing themselves because we never have had to. And with the charter schools, private schools, school choice, a lot of different things that are here now, we need to do a much better job of that and share the good news about our school system. Press releases, we do have one person in the system that is in charge of calling the papers, as well as the principals and secretaries, to invite them into our schools when we have certain events. And if they can't come, which we realize they can't come to everything, then sometimes we send them a message that we'd like to have in the newspaper, and sometimes that works, and sometimes it doesn't. And we certainly understand that and have a good, I believe we have a good relationship with all of our local papers. Bangor Daily News covers us, as well as Portland Press, every once in a while. Board meetings, this is more up your alley, but board meetings this year, just probably around Christmas time, that we put these on our website now and as a YouTube, and so that if someone has a specific interest in a topic at a board meeting, they can just fast-forward to that part. And a lot of people, I don't think, realize that. So I think it's very similar to the City of Bath and their meetings as well. We do invite the community in to our schools. The simple ones are concerts, performances, Grandparents' Day, those types of things. But we also have advisory boards at some of our schools, and we have the SAG groups as well, where community members can get involved as much as they'd like to be. And the one thing that we did just recently, and many thanks to Bath Savings, as well as to a community member, Melissa Cole, that is helping us out, is that, if you didn't see it, I have copies here, but that we're taking a full-page ad out on a monthly basis with The Times Record, and just for the sole purpose of RSU1 being able to share the good news that are going on in our schools. So every month, they feature an article, the bigger one with pictures will rotate next year, and the other schools will have a, I think it's 150 to 200-word limit. So it is, you know, limited to some degree, but it's a great way for our principals and our school staff to be able to get the good news out in the newspapers. So I have copies of that for you here as well. So I'll be quiet and kind of see what questions you might have or what other suggestions that you have. We're always searching for ways to get it out there, the good news that is going on. I mean, obviously, there's going to be times in a system where, you know, we've got to talk with the press about unfortunate news, but at the same time, this, we get in such a fast-paced environment that sometimes we forget to stop and be able to share, we take for granted sometimes what goes on in our schools, and we need to share that the best that we can.
Okay, thank you, Patrick. Are there any questions for Patrick or comments on the topic?
Patrick, are you taking the lead on this, or how are you coordinating this among the buildings?
No, I think the general day-to-day things, we're just trying to make a little bit more of a concerted effort. And so our principals are in our offices, and teaching staff help do that. As far as the most recent one, well, the websites, Dean Emerson is helping to make those better, as well as, but The Times Record was really something that, we talked with Brunswick a little bit, and we also talked as a school system as far as having maybe more of a, I guess I'd say a bigger kind of double-fold newspaper that would maybe come out twice a year, that would be a little, you know, fairly thick with a lot of good news. We felt like that was kind of cumbersome in this first year, and then we felt like this Times Record one, you know, a full-page ad, kind of some quick hitters, but also a featured article would be a good way to, a first step in the process. So Steve, to answer your question, I guess I would say I helped come up with the idea, but The Times Record was very helpful. They came over and met with us, and now we have a community member that, thank goodness, has taken this on, and she organizes it. She's the point person, and she's very organized, edits, takes the pictures for us. So finding someone like that in your district... So finding someone like that in your district, some of the school systems in Maine that do that newspaper approach like I was talking to you about just a second ago, you know, have a designated person in their system that focuses on that, and we don't have that right now.
Anyone else with questions? Dave, oh, Bill?
Oh, I've answered my own question.
Okay.
This is sponsored, so in effect, this is paid advertising.
Yes.
It's not considered news, I mean, in a sense, it's advertising.
Right.
Is that correct?
Bill?
I just want to say that our meeting, I guess we called it a retreat with all the staff, and I became sort of cheerleader-in-chief at that meeting, if you recall, and got rather animated about it, and I feel very, very strongly that it's something that, first of all, we've improved dramatically, and we need to continue to improve. As Patrick said, we're gonna be in a competitive situation. We are in a competitive situation, but increasingly so, as charter schools come on and private schools come on the scene. And we've got to get the new, good news out, that we've got a super flagship here, and we can do the job and do it well. So that's my comment.
Yep.
Cheerleader-in-chief, I have a new title. Don't have the legs to go with it, though.
All right. Anyone else? Any other comments on this? I think it's something, you know, and I know Bill will stay on top of us, but it's something that we need to continue with, this is a good start. I would also just recommend that with this Times Record piece, this monthly piece, that we also dedicate some space in there to some hard data, that whether it's once a month or once a quarter, we show numbers about, you know, school populations, how we've done in certain testing, you know, where we're sending our graduates, any hard numbers that are good to get out to the public, so. All right, anyone else from the board on PR? We'll move on to Committee Reports, 9.1, Facilities Committee. I'll turn this over to Bill.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The committee continues to meet and develop, the Harriman reports continue to develop more and more information, background information, suggestions, cost estimates for improvements to our facilities, and cost has become one of the predominant areas in which facilities has become embroiled. And as such, the linkage with the Finance Committee became very important to us at the conclusion of our last meeting. Steve attended, chairs the Finance Committee, and we got more and more and more into discussions that had fiscal ramifications, bond issue, the recommendations from Harriman, our flagship here needs some heavy-duty work. So we are going to combine, we're going to have joint meetings, we're not going to combine them as such, but we're going to have joint meetings starting in June with the Finance Committee, and we will work to come up with recommendations around the options that you've all seen from Harriman relative to the elementary schools, and recommendations relative to the physical needs of Morse High School and the Vogts School. And we'll work jointly to come together with a package, and hopefully come forth with a plan which the full board then will be able to move forward with. And we're, I think we're pretty unanimous in the feeling that we're going to have to put a bond together. It's a question of what elements are going to be in that bond, and what the bottom line is going to be. We have established a preliminary goal of bringing a recommendation to the board in September, early September, the September meeting, with the hope that we'll be able to move forward into the November election with a referendum for the bond, whatever it turns out to be, how large, how small, what elements will be included in it. We have a shopping list, and we have to be realistic, and I'm sure that the combined committees will be realistic with moving forward. So that's where we are. We've got the two reports, all the committee members have them, they have recommendations in them, they have estimates of cost, as Harriman sees them. Dave Richards, our Facilities Director, wasn't completely in tune with some of the costs that they put in, that Harriman put forth for us. So I would urge committee members, if you haven't done so already, contact Dave, take a guided tour, particularly of Morse, because it's a very detailed and long report, and get to know the nooks and crannies of that, of the series of buildings here, and be able to relate directly to the needs that are being spelled out in our report.
Okay. There any questions for Bill? Has all of the, do all of the board members have copies of that report?
I have the elementary, I don't have the high school.
Okay. Patrick, if you could just make sure that all board members have copies of that report, and both reports, the Morse report and the Facilities, the elementary school report, and if you could review it, because that's gonna be part of the conversation that we need to have as a board going forward.
As you review it, please, please contact with your questions and your ideas, either finance, if your ideas are primarily financial, or facilities, if your ideas revolve around our physical plans. Let us know what you're thinking, these reports are long and detailed, and it would be very helpful if we had a flavor for the full board's feelings on some of these issues.
Okay, thank you, Bill. So no other questions for Bill? All right, we will move on to Finance Committee Report. I'll turn this over to Steve.
It's stereo.
There we go.
Thanks, Tim. The Finance Committee met on May 9th. We had three agenda items. One was a wrap-up on the budget. We just discussed some of the implications of the board's adoption of a proposed budget earlier that week, and talked a little bit about process going forward.
Turn that a little closer.
We also talked on the question of bonding, and in the context of the Harriman reports. And the last item we discussed was a, an assignment out to committee members to use some of the time during the summer where, at least initially, we thought we might not be meeting regularly, to brainstorm some ideas to, that we could bring back to the table in September on ways to approach the budget, deal with the budget, that are somewhat out of context of the typical annual budget discussion. In other words, multi-year issues that would have financial implications for the district, and how we might initiate some of those, big picture, big picture ideas. I did go to the, as Bill mentioned, did go to the Finance Committee member, Facilities Committee meeting. We did decide to meet on June 6th. If you remember the time, I would appreciate it.
Eight o'clock.
Was it eight o'clock? So we will be meeting at eight o'clock on June 6th, and those are our public meetings. We'll get notice out to the board members, of course, but participation by other members of the board who aren't on those two committees, I'm sure would be more than welcome. And I think that's it. I think that's it.
Any questions for Steve? On what's going on with finance? Okay, we will move on to...
Tim, before we move on, I know in the context of the Harriman report and others, you had mentioned, in a conversation we had, you wanted to talk about the alumni.
Oh, right. Here's the way that I see things. We've had, we've had two separate reports done. One, both were done by Harriman, one is specific to utilization of space within our elementary schools, and are there any efficiencies that we can gain through some reorganization, potential closure? There are a lot of options talked about in that report. The second report deals exclusively with the facility of Morse, and that's sort of a pre-study. We know that the condition of that building is not great, there are a lot of major dollar items that we've neglected, you know, over the number of years, and we're 15 or 20 years out from receiving funds from the state to build a new school. So the initiative with Morse began this fall, and the intent was, where do we go from here? What does the board do between now and that 15- or 20-year period when we get a new school? We have this preliminary report, I've read the report, and there's some costly things that need to be done. The question needs to be asked, are you throwing good money after bad by investing dollars into the building, or should you wait and defer some of those changes, and can we afford to wait? And that's what I was hoping an independent report would give us. We're not just getting feedback from within the district or within the board, we've got an outside firm that's saying, these are some things you need to address. So all of that said, I've been wrestling with the concept, here we are, coming into the budget period. Right around graduation is the biggest assembly of alumni that the high school sees, and as we have heard and have been told, we have a very strong alumni association. And I didn't know what the board thought about, if there was an opportunity, and there may not be, for myself, or someone from the board, or someone within the district, to make a short presentation to the alumni during Alumni Weekend about the results of that report. It may not happen, but again, I think it's important to, with any process, to get all stakeholders involved. And as soon as we can get alumni, community, the municipalities involved in this, the better off we're gonna be in terms of coming up with a positive outcome, and also having people feel like they were involved in the process, and it's not just the board dictating to the municipalities what we're going to do. So that said, how does the board feel about us reaching out to the alumni at this stage of the game? The benefit is, it's early in the process, and we've got an independent report. The downside is, we don't have a lot of data yet, we haven't chosen a direction yet, but maybe it might be beneficial just to let them know that we've done the report, this is something we're gonna be contemplating, and we would like to get you involved, so.
And invite their feedback.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But do you think it would be beneficial for us to reach out to them?
I think so. I, you know, as you indicated, we don't have, we don't have a real story to tell at this point, but to make them aware that the report exists, and that the board is at a point where it's gonna set out on a course of action, whatever, whatever that course is, and whatever action results is an unknown at this point, but I think it would, it would give the greater RSU One community a sense of ownership and involvement in the process, which in the end, I agree with you 100%, in the end, will only be a positive for, in terms of, in terms of the outcome, whatever that outcome is. But having everyone involved, you know, sets aside the criticism that, well, we haven't heard about this before, why didn't you tell us? I'd get out there, it's not, it's not a real, you know, long conversation at this point, but get out there and just advise, advise them that we're gonna start.
Anyone else?
I think it's a good idea. Because we know that the Alumni Association is, you know, they're very proud of Morse High School, there's, you know, the tradition and the nostalgia for, you know, anybody who thinks back to your high school graduation, hopefully there's a positive nostalgia, but we can't, I don't know if there's any way to convey, you know, we're not trying to take that away, or diminish it, or anything else, but the needs of the kids now are what's most important, and really, when you think about, you know, as a, as an alumnus, or alumni, or, well, I don't know that Greek, you know, the Latin stuff there, it's been a few years. You know, that's what we should be looking for, our kids going through the schools, that, you know, they have the best, you know, hopefully, you know, when, my parents graduated high school back in the 50s, they had the best. They, you know, I had the best, and I want my kids to have the best. And it's not gonna look the same as it did back in the 50s or in the 80s, you know, and if there was some way to convey that, that, you know, we do need to make this, but it's for a good reason, it's not just, you know, we wanna, you know, tear down, you know, your spirit weak memories of, you know, decorating, that sounds very important, absolutely, but, you know, we need to really meet the needs of the kids now, and they're so drastically different than they were, you know, 20, 30 years ago even.
Yeah, and again, it's early in the process, we're not, we may do nothing.
Right.
But I think we have an obligation to at least investigate this, and there's some specific, you know, structural issues that are, that come up in that report, and I just feel that if we just at least let the alumni know, we're investigating this, and would welcome your participation, I think will benefit, instead of waiting until next June and saying, well, here's what we've researched, and this is what we're going to do. And it may just be, you know, a two-minute announcement at some alumni function, but I'd like to, if there's an opportunity, leverage that Alumni Weekend and just say, we've done the report, we're going to look into it, we'd love to get your feedback, so. Unless anyone from the board feels strongly against it, then I'll reach out, and if I get any feedback from the Alumni Association, or get an opportunity, I'll let you know. Okay. All right, we'll move on to item 10.0, Superintendent's Report.
Yeah, just a brief report. There is student artwork on display by Morse students for the next, I think, couple of weeks at Mays Cafe, so if any of you are there to have something to eat, or just want to go in and look at the artwork, it's there. Again, I just encourage you to stop by and check it out. On May 3rd, we took teams to University of Maine at Orano to compete in the Windblade and Windstorm Challenges, and one of our teams in the Windstorm Challenge ended up winning first place. So the four members of this team will be awarded a $20,000 scholarship if they are accepted into the engineering program at the University of Maine. You know, as you know, this year has been a tough year financially, we've had to have a freeze on the budget for quite some time, and I just would like to thank, you know, all of the businesses, it wouldn't be right for me to list them, because I know I would probably forget somebody, but the businesses that support our school throughout the year, as well as the other organizations, PTAs, Davenport Trust, you know, the Ed Foundation, the Education Foundation that's new this year, just thank everybody for their generosity, a lot of our field trips, a lot of special things that happen at our schools to enhance the education that our students receive, wouldn't have happened this year without, again, without their generosity, so thank you for that. And just to let you know, the annual budget report, review, whatever you want to call it, will be on our website tomorrow, that anybody can download and just review online, as well as, we'll put it, hard copies in all of our schools, as well as town municipal offices, so that will be there as well. Highlights of our school system, but also the budget information that you need for next Tuesday. That's it.
Okay, we'll move on to item 10.2, Financial Report. Presenting this one?
Yeah, nothing's changed, I met with Ruthie today, I mean, things have changed, but I mean, from March to April, it's pretty straightforward, you can see the lines that we still continue to have concerns about, special education instruction and tuition, some of the main care issues, and then you can... And then you can see the lines where we still have some monies remaining. So if you take the top part, expenditures, and then you look at the bottom, revenues, you know, we're, you know, prediction right now, again, this is worst-case scenario is our opinion, is around $250,000 that hopefully will be remaining to the good out of this year's budget. So it's tighter than it has been in the past. And again, if some of the main care billing doesn't come through, then we'll be in better shape than that. So we'll know more, obviously, you know, next month when we talk to you. But that, you know, the bottom part, you see the 325 at the top, under amount remaining, under expenditures, but then the amount remaining at the bottom, that's a negative $84,000 because of the $165,000 curtailment that we had this year. So.
Any questions for Patrick from the board regarding the financial report? I saw one thing that stood out, and I didn't get a chance to compare it to a previous one, but under food service, we've appropriated $75,000. We still have $75,000 remaining to be spent. None of that's encumbered. What is that differential about?
Yeah, that was the, we're still considering transferring that money over to the food service program, but right now, our food service program is doing better than it has in the previous two years. And Ruthie's a little reluctant to make that shift right now because of how close our overall budget is.
Okay.
So you may see some movement on that by the next time we meet.
Any other questions? Okay. We will move on to Item 11.0, Old Business. We have four second readings of policy. Again, these are action items. We'll begin with 11.1, Second Reading of Policy EEBB, RSU-1 Use of Private Vehicles on School Business. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved to approve?
Sure.
Seconded by Bill. Any further discussion on this policy? All those in favor, raise your hand. None opposed? That passes. Okay. Item 11.2, Second Reading of Policy KDB, Public's Right to Know, Freedom of Access. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved to accept? Okay. Is there a second?
No second.
Second by Robin. Any comments, questions, further discussion on this policy? All right. All those in favor of the motion to approve, raise your hand. None opposed? This passes. 11.3, Second Reading of Policy JKD, Suspension of Students. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Alan to approve?
Second.
Seconded by Steve. Any further discussion on this policy? All those in favor of the motion to approve, raise your hand. That passes. Final one, Second Reading of Policy, these are in tandem, JKE and JKE-R, Expulsion of Students. Is there a motion?
Moved to accept.
Motion to accept by Steve.
Second.
Seconded by Alan. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion to accept? None opposed? Okay. We'll move on to Item 11.5, Review of Board Goals. Anybody want to have any discussion regarding goals? I just had one item. I would ask, again, kind of to follow up on my comments early, that for the next meeting, we get some sort of report on the staff evaluation process. If we could have that for the next meeting? All right. We'll move on to New Business. We have a couple of personnel items. We'll begin with 12.1. Patrick?
Yeah, 12.1, just a FYI, resignation Rebecca Gartoff from the music position. She's accepted a position overseas, and just like to thank her. She was with us for one year, but did a fine job with our chorus program at Morse.
Any questions for Patrick? Will we be filling that position?
We will. We're in the process of deciding how to move forward with it.
Okay. We'll move on to Item 12.2. We have one nomination.
Yeah, I'm pleased to nominate Emily Ditman as the Applied Academics Instructor at BRCTC as a 1.0.
Okay, this is an action item, correct? All right. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Your motion, Dave?
I'll second.
To approve the nomination, seconded by Steve? Any further discussion? I know Emily is a real asset at BRCTC, so I'm glad that we're able to keep her in any capacity. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. None opposed? That passes. Okay. You had some policies in front of you for first reading. Again, those are not an action item. I think those were also emailed. I don't tend to see those policies when they're emailed. Please take some time before the next board meeting to review those. I just want to make sure that I have the right ones here. So we have one on extracurricular activities, participation regulation, another one on management of concussions and other head injuries, third one on truancy, fourth one on use of physical restraint and seclusion, and I think that was one we just recently approved.
We did, but law, last year, and it's been changed.
Law changes, okay. Great. Procedures on physical restraints and seclusion, and personal and district-issued personnel, per, excuse me, personal electronic devices. All right. So if you could please review those before the next meeting. We'll move on to Item 14.0, which is our second public comment section. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Come on up.
My name is David Keeler. I live here on Andrews Road, and I do want to encourage the board to break soccer before the Alumni Association Alumni Week. I've come to this meeting particularly for, when I've read the paper, they may be starting to. I am a Bath Alumni Associate Member, longtime graduate here, many years ago, and I will know their blood runs blue. These people will be real strong and will want a great input of what you do to this building. I know it's antiquated, it's old, it's the second oldest high school in Maine, and I know we're on a pipeline for a new school, but I do encourage you to follow up on addressing Alumni Association. It may not go anywhere, but at least bring them on board. Thank you. This is the third meeting, Tim. Thank you.
David, if you wouldn't mind, if you could stick around, we'll be wrapping the meeting up in about five minutes. I'll have a conversation with you. Thank you. All right. We'll move on to Item 15.0. Next meeting dates and location. Just a reminder, the district budget meeting, that again, is the town hall-style meeting. All board members need to be present for that meeting. That is Tuesday, the 28th of May at Bath Middle School at 6:00 PM. Encourage all of the public to attend that. That is our first part of the validation process when we vote up or down the school budget. The second date is June 4th, which is the second part of the validation, budget validation process. That will be the referendum vote. I encourage everyone to attend the polls. That will be held at regular polling places throughout the district. Our next regular board meeting is set for June 24th. That will be at Phippsburg at 6:00. Any comments or additions on the dates? Not a one. All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Bill, seconded by Alan. Any further discussion? All those in favor, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.